I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order, December 4th, 2017. All of us please call the roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Mangus.
Here.
Mr. Marmy.
President.
Mr. Rapp.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Koss.
Here.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
We have everyone here this evening. If you please rise for the invocation. Mr. Frazier is called by the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. The only Father, thank you this day for giving us the opportunity to come in these chambers and do the will of the city. Please continue to bless our city. Thank you for all the opportunities that we have, and thank you for the season before us. May we remember those that are less fortunate than us, and may we have empathy, and sympathy, and compassion on them, and make sure that they're a part of our community. Thank you for the blessings that we have, and the families and friends that we have. May you continue to bless us and keep us, and give us plenty of opportunity. In Jesus' name I pray.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's time for council to discuss a whole thing pertaining to the meeting tonight. We have several things, actually. I will go over a few of them here. During miscellaneous, we're going to talk about Rule 21 to reconsider Resolution Number 17-87. Also, we're going to use Rule 11 to talk about 1759, 1760, 1795, 1796, and 1797. We'll do more discussing about that in miscellaneous, but I just want to let you know that that was kind of... Do you have anything else for caucus this evening? Next, we have the minutes of our November 20th, 2017. Do we have motion to approve those?
Voting.
Motion by Mr. Rapp.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have appointments by Mayor Hall. Reappointing Jack Dinger... Help me with that.
Dinger.
Dinger. To the Board of Zoning Adjustments, his four-year term will begin January 1, 2018, and expire December 31st, 2021. Mayor?
He's on the BZA, and just a reappointment on him here, just as it continues on. We put the temporary board. We extend that every couple of years here to kind of keep it rolling, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Also, we have Mayor Hall reappointing Carol Wachtel to the Combined General Health District Board as one of the two City of Newark representatives. Her reterm begins January 1, 2018. The term will be for five years and two months to get the appointment in line with the District Advisory Council annual meeting per their request. Her term will expire February 28, 2023. Subsequent terms.
Subsequent.
Subsequent terms. I would say that. Will be five years.
Carol's been on the board and does a great job serving on that. They've asked us to instead of putting it in a calendar year, to go March 1st. That's how their meeting year does. They meet in March, so that's why the two months extra part of that. So she does a great job. It was a request that you reappointed.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions on this one? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. And finally, we have Mayor Hall appointing Mark Mottor, Sue Spiker, and Candy Engel to the Etna Corporate Park Joint Economic Development Zone 1. This is a two-year term beginning January 1, 2018, and will expire December 31st, 2019. Mayor?
Yep. Those are six-member boards. The Gen Z 1 ends this year, Gen Z 2 next year. It kind of all rates the two-year terms. It's three appointments from us and three from the Etna Township. And the three from us are designed to be a city rep, which is Mark Mottor, a county rep, which is Sue Spiker, and then a rep that's recommended by Southwest Licking Schools, and that's Candy Engel, who sits on the school board out there. So Candy has been on the Gen Z 2, and Sue and Mark are both repeats. So you've done a great job too. Thank you, Mayor. Any questions?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have two reports from standing committees, one from Finance and one from Service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next, reports from city officials. We have one from Stephen Johnson, our City of Newark Auditor, announcing that the government finance officers of the United States and Canada have awarded the City Auditor's Office Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award represents the 25th year the Auditor's Office has received this honor. The certificate is awarded to entities whose financial statements meet the GFOA's high standards for reporting and represent transparency and clarity in accounting practices. This recognition represents the highest award in governmental financial reporting. Mr. Johnson, do you have to say
I hate to keep sending you these notices, but I feel it's my duty to inform you what's happening. This award is a very nice thing to receive for my office, but actually it benefits the city and the community in general. And these awards, as I said many times before, would not be possible without my excellent staff. And it's been a pleasure working with this body. You also have a part in this because you make our jobs easier. Thank you.
Thank you. How many years have you been part of this award?
I've only been here for 20 years, I guess. It started before I got here.
That's pretty good.
I'm not as old as I look.
We'll give you that a hand. And our other report from city officials this evening is Barb Jobb, City Tax Administrator, the income tax report for a period ending October 31st, 2017, through November 15, 2017. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Under Communications, we have one from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control Transfer Application. Also, we have one, actually two, from the Ohio Division of Control, another for a new application for Whitewater's Mark Hotel Management DBA to Cherryvale Lodge. Also, we have one from GGS Inc., a notification of proposed obstruction of a telephone communications pole with appropriate height of 40 feet at an address to be determined approximately .16 miles west of the intersection of Deo Drive and Mount Brooklyn Road in Newark. Without objection, those three will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. That is basically your time to be heard. This is not a debate with council, but this is a time for you. If you'd like to come up and state your opinion, we'd like to hear it. Do you have anyone from this first section of citizens' comments? If you please raise your hand. There's two sections, one now and one later. Mayor?
Well, this is not a party. Sometimes it's the way the ball bounces. This is regarding a statement that was made...
Hang on. Wait till you get there, so we can all hear you, and give us your name and address for directions.
My name is Callie Rucker, and I reside at 130 Delmar Avenue, Newark, Ohio 43055. And this is concerning a statement that was made calling allegedly people undesirables. That is an insult to me and an insult to the community. We are supposed to be leaders for the community. How would you feel if I turn around and call you undesirables? Because some of the things that you all sent out is undesirable. We, as a community, have to set an example for these children, or kids, or whatever word you choose to do. Okay, now, when we have an event, I see nobody shows up there. It seems like when we vote you all in, it seems like you want to go somewhere and call people undesirable. And I want to know what possessed somebody to call somebody undesirable. We are citizens of Newark. Sometimes people think, you know, you can call them desirable, but they're going to call them. They're human beings just like anybody else. Suppose the table turns and somebody calls you or something like that. How would you feel? Because just like I tell people, if the ones that believe, God can bring you down to your feet. He have a way of bringing people together even when they don't want to come together. It's the people that have animosity, strife, and hatred in their heart. Let there be a disaster or somebody, a hurricane or somebody, they don't care what color you are, who you are, where you came from, this and what the hell right then and there. So why can't it be like this always? And just like God gave it, he can take it from him, just like they didn't think nothing about it. Why would you want to move something somewhere else when it's the only job that some people have to come out and enjoy themselves? Well, if you call them desirable, do you wonder why they are undesirable? Can anybody answer that question? We could sit there and call you undesirable. Sometimes people have to watch what come out of their mouth. These kids are listening to you. They're watching you. And right now, we, as adults, is not setting a good example. Like, I am a member of the Newark Think Tank on poverty, and I'm quite sure the ones that have an interest know what it deals with. It deals with addiction, homeless people, and veterans. How do we know that we won't be at the end of the table, or the hill, or the foot, or whatever choose you use, word you choose to? We could be there. Anyone that wants to be in the celebration of the night or tomorrow. How do we know? You have to be very careful how you treat people and talk to people. You don't talk at people. You talk to people. We are human beings just like anybody else. And the same people you all call undesirable, well, these undesirable people, once upon a time, probably have paid you all salary, if you know what I'm talking about. So on that note, I think I've had enough, and I know people are tired of listening. You know, you can always have an opinion. When you have an opinion, you may end it. When you tell the truth, people do not like you. It's not what you believe in, it's how you react. So on that note, I think I've said enough, and people probably don't want to hear me talk anymore, but I got it out. And on that note, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. In the back row, Mayor? Can you hear me back there okay?
Yeah.
Is it better?
No.
You cannot hear me? We would like yours louder. Okay. We've been working on the sound today. That's why I was asking.
Appreciate it. Hi, my name's Laura Candy. I live in 1120 Winter Moon Avenue. If you guys care anything about this town, you guys have given up that 11% raise that you're going to be discussing today. We could sure use another police officer instead of you guys having a raise to help keep our town safe. Maybe if we had another cop, maybe we wouldn't have lost the gazebo. Maybe we won't lose the walking path. Something's got to give. You know, if you guys were here for the people and not the money, that would make a difference, I would think, in this town. And also, I wanted to thank Jeremy for being such a dedicated person to this town, and I think you've done a good job. And I wish some of you guys would step up to where he's been. He's involved with people. Everyone knows him. Everyone likes him. And we don't see any of you guys else out there. No one. He goes to the rallies, and he's really stepped up, and I'm proud of him, Jeremy. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Someone over here. Mr. Crawford. Does anyone else wants to speak this first section? Anyone else? Okay.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. Just want to rise up, just like Laura had before me, in opposition to, was it 17-58 on the pay raise. There's a few other things I'd like to talk about. I'll just specifically focus on that here. And I understand, you know, it's been a while since the last time it was raised, and I don't think anyone can dispute that. A lot of you do, you know, work hard at trying to get the facts. But I know, and it's something I actually brought up about 10 years ago. I came up here and I just pitched an idea that I had randomly thought about one day about how, I think it would be preferable if we, the people, had a say in whether or not our elected officials had a raise, not just in City Council, but State Legislature, Congress, or what have you. You know, we have to create a vehicle for that, but I think here in the city, you know, an initiative petition would be one way of doing that. I just think, given the fact how we do literally have a tight budget, and I know that for sure, I think it sends the wrong message for us to have a pay raise. Even if it is small, it's about symbolism in this respect. So just to urge a no vote on 17-58. Thank you.
Jen Carnegie, 2584 Upland View. I would like to recognize Mark Frazier for being at the Lookup Center on Thanksgiving morning. And I wasn't sure, because I don't think he'd shaved, and I wasn't sure if it was you.
I got a haircut. He's a little too...
I had a double tape, but I appreciated seeing you out there. And Jeremy's always out with us. He was at the Epic Rally, which was really a good rally. I just wanted to kind of hit on three things tonight. One is still the gazebo transparency. So a couple things have come up in regard to who paid for it, and it's not getting back to the attorney that's representing the group. So whether the donations were paid for rebuilding, taking it away, the group just wants to know who did it and who paid for it. And clearly, they're asking for it to be put back still. So I also met with Eric Wright regarding the footbridge closing, and he said that when the guy with the machete was beating on the school window, no police came. So that, to me, is very concerning, that we have a preschool with someone beating on the window with the machete, and nobody's going to run on that call. So if we close the footbridge, is that a Band-Aid to the real issue, which is the lack of our police forces? So if my kid went there, and I knew we didn't have police to go, and I talked to him about a resource officer, and he said they don't have the funds to do that. So I just thought that was very concerning. And third, I would just like to, again, bring up the raise and just voice my opposition to it. And I realize, we talked for a while after the last meeting, and it would give full-time, you know, credit, but this isn't a full-time job. And in closing to that, the last time I spoke, Mr. Rapp said he did not get my email. And then at 11 o'clock at night on the 21st of November, he sent an email that said, "This is an email that I actually received." So I wanted to investigate if it was a server issue. Maybe emails aren't going through, because that was a pretty common thread when I hit doors. In the last several months, the email server did show on the 17th of November that it did go through at 157. So that shows that it would have pinged into your email box. And also, the two that I sent in January that were not responded to, those also showed up on the server list. So if, you know, you guys are going to sit up here and vote for a raise for yourselves, then you have to make sure that you're doing the job, and that you are representing the people and listening. Thanks.
Okay. We'll move on to ordinances on the second reading, 17-57.
Ordinance 17-57 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the City of Newark by creating the position of Assistant Director of Human Resources within the Division of Human Resources with the strength of one.
You prefer your second reading of 17-57. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bob?
I'll move to adopt 17-57.
Motion by Mr. Bob?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-57? Seeing none, all of us please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
17-57 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 17-58.
Ordinance 17-58 by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Lang, and ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain elected officials of the City of Newark, Ohio, and replacing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith.
You prefer your second reading of 17-58. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bob?
I'll move to adopt 17-58.
Motion by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-58?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang?
So we've discussed this raise within the context of getting the full credit under the OPERS requirements. And I circulated, I want to propose an amendment to 17-58 that would actually go ahead and take the step and do that, just that. I understand there were initially some concerns from the auditor, and what we want to propose is that the clerk of council and president of council would be responsible for monitoring changes to OPERS, and in the event of a change, would notify the auditor. The auditor would calculate the minimum required in order to ensure full 12 months credit in each 12-month calendar year. So I've included a formula as to how to do that as well. I've circulated that amendment to the rest of council. I think that's all of the nuts and bolts of it. I don't think I missed anything.
So your motion is to amend 17-58 to 17-58A?
Correct.
Which is hopefully in everyone's pocket. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, all of us please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
No.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
17-58 has been amended, 8 to 2. Okay. Now, is there any conversation on 17-58A?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd first.
Okay. I just want to say, I've heard all this discussion about the raise. Number one, it won't affect me. I'm not going to be here, okay? I saw the headline in The Advocate that said 11%, which sounds like a huge amount. I am the first to say we need policemen and firemen. The amount, $800 a year times seven, which is what it would be this next year, would be like $5,600. I'll be honest, when I was first appointed in April of 2007 to be on City Council, somebody said, "Do you get paid to be on City Council?" And I said, "I think so." And they said, "How much do you get?" And I said, "I don't know." I don't think anybody up here is here for the money, to be honest. I don't think we go through, we spend not just a lot of time, but a lot of, I know you've heard me discuss on various occasions, the sleepless nights I've had over some issues that have been very, very difficult. And I just don't see an $800 difference. I'm not convinced that'll make somebody run for council with everything that is entailed with it, all the time it takes to do that, and all the campaigning. And campaigning, for those of you who ran for office, know how expensive that can be. And $800 doesn't even touch it. I did notice in the Advocate editorial the other night, it mentioned that council members in Zanesville make $9,000 a year. I guess I just don't see that it's that big an issue. I realize it's one time when you could say no. And I've said in the past, when somebody's discussed whether or not they should try for a raise, and I say, "Can't vote myself a raise." But I do think that we're not talking a huge amount of money. We're not talking, and as public employees, whether we like it or not, we're attached to the retirement system. That's not something you have a choice. You're a city employee, so you're attached to the retirement system. And I don't see this as major an issue as it's been. So with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, so, you know, last time we had some comments from folks that made me think, and Autumn, thank you for pulling some numbers for me. So the last raise that this body saw was in 2007. And so I also asked Autumn to go back and look at a couple of things for me. And as it's been reported, it does amount to about 11% raise. Over that same time period, the cumulative rate of inflation is about 20, a little over 22%. So we're talking about half the rate of inflation. The cumulative percentage of raises that we've given to the firefighters amounts to just under 20% over that time, and for the police department, it's close to 25%. So just want to lay those numbers out there, I think, to put into perspective. It was also mentioned that this body should get raises after everybody else in the city government. And Autumn was able also to confirm that over those 11 years, I don't think it'll surprise anybody to know that every other city employee has seen a raise over that time. So that'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Anyone else? All of us please call a roll of votes. On 17-58 has been amended.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
No.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
No.
Mr. Koss.
No.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
17-58A passes 6 to 4. Next, we go on to resolutions on the second reading, 17-9.
Resolution 17-90 by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Lang, Mr. Frazier, a resolution proposing the creation of a special improvement district, Downtown Newark Special Improvement District Incorporated, along with the required petitions, the initial articles of incorporation, and the proposed plan for services for the special improvement district.
You prefer your second reading of 17-90. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rapp.
Make a motion to adopt 17-90.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rapp, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 17-90? Seeing none, all of us please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
17-90 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 17-91.
Resolution 17-91 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Koss, Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
17-91, Mr. Marmy.
President, make, need to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 17-91.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some expenses that we have to get out immediately, and we're getting near the end of the year, so we need to make sure that these are expedited when the documents come in.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. A motion to waive the two-day reading rule is not debatable. Autumn, please call a roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make motion to adopt Resolution 17-91.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 17-91? Seeing none, all of us please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
And finally, on the first reading, we have 17-93. Oh, I'm sorry. 17-91 passes 10-0. And now we'll go to 17-93.
Resolution 17-93 by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Koss, Mr. Frazier, Mrs. Floyd. It's a resolution, it's a preliminary legislation with ODOT for the resurfacing of portions of the state ballot 16 and the state ballot 79.
17-93 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. This is not a debate with council. This is just your chance to rehearse. Do we have anyone for this section of citizens' comments? Please raise your hand, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Smith. I live at 237 Violet Court here in town. We've heard some discussion earlier today about undesirables. I don't want to make light of that or anything like that. I think it is a serious issue. However, I think we should be aware of how we are implying that some of our youngest people are undesirable when we have not provided good and safe facilities for them, for their positions to wait for school buses. Near the apartment blocks on Reddington Road, near the playground that's by there, there is a bus stop for the children. There is no sidewalk in that area. During the winter months, which are coming up soon, that area gets plowed, is filled with snow. Children end up walking in the street to get to their bus stop. This is... This is a clear safety problem. What are we telling our children if not that they are undesirable by making them do this? There is a playground there that, where there is no safe sidewalk for children to walk to that playground, even during the periods where it's not covered with snow and ice on that road. This is a clear safety problem for the children of our city. I think it's essential that we address this safety problem in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to miscellaneous or award-winning auditors. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. President, I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our Honorable Auditor, Mr. Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to take a little bit of your time tonight because we have a couple of issues we need to address. The first is the need to reconsider resolution seventeen dash eighty-seven, which was passed by council two weeks ago. There were some relatively minor errors in that piece of legislation that need to be corrected. I've discussed it with Mr. Rath and Mr. Cos, who are chair and vice-chair of the Service Committee, where that legislation arose from. Seventeen eighty-seven was a piece of legislation appropriating a small portion of land for the Ohio Street Bridge project, the land being essentially abandoned, the owners being unknown. The problem was that in the preamble and in the body of the legislation, it was stated that the parcels being appropriated were parcels two A and two B. It should have read two, two A and two B. And the amount of money that has been appropriated and would be set aside for payment of these appropriations, if an owner were to come forward, needed to be changed also because the value of parcel two, which was left out, which is essentially just an oversight on the part of my office to miss that parcel, the amount that was set aside for that was two thousand dollars. So, again, I've spoken with Mr. Cos and Mr. Rath, and I think at this point, with your permission, Mr. President, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Rath for a motion to reconsider seventeen dash eighty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Yes, with Rule twenty-one, if something had passed two weeks or the prior meeting, you can use that. If someone on the prevailing side makes a motion to reconsider that. So, Mr. Rath?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt seventeen dash eighty-seven A.
I'm sorry. We have to reconsider seventeen dash eighty-seven.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider seventeen dash eighty-seven A.
Seventeen dash eighty-seven. Reconsider seventeen dash eighty-seven first.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cos. Any discussion on reconsidering seventeen dash eighty-seven?
Mr. President.
Hang on. We need to vote on that before we do anything else, right or not?
Need to vote on the motion to reconsider.
Right. Any other discussion on reconsidering it? Autumn, please call the roll to vote to reconsider seventeen dash eighty-seven.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
We are reconsidering seventeen dash eighty-seven like it never happened. Mr. Sassen.
Procedurally, that means exactly that, Mr. President, that seventeen eighty-seven is back on the table to correct the error that was made in that. I believe Mr. Rath is going to be making a motion to amend seventeen eighty-seven to substitute it seventeen eighty-seven dash A.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Rath?
Brilliant idea. I'll make a motion to amend seventeen dash eighty-seven to seventeen dash eighty-seven A.
Second by Mr. Cos. So, we have a motion to amend seventeen dash eighty-seven to seventeen dash eighty-seven A, which is in your pocket. Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on this amended motion? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash eighty-seven A as amended has passed. Mr. Sassen?
Oh, that's the amendment.
That's the amended.
Back on the floor, Marley's seventeen dash eighty-seven.
Seventeen dash eighty-seven A has been amended. Yes, Mr. Rath. One more try. Seventeen dash eighty-seven A has been amended.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt seventeen dash eighty-seven A.
We're okay.
It's already on the table.
Yeah, we're okay on that.
Okay.
It has been amended. Now, we just need to see if there's any discussion on amendment, then we'll vote on it.
No.
That's correct. It's on the table as amended for debate and discussion of seventeen dash eighty-seven A.
No discussion? Autumn, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash eighty-seven as amended has passed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Not that that wasn't confusing enough. Mr. Sassen?
Who keep the confusion going? I'm going to be asking council to invoke Rule eleven on the next four pieces of legislation that are on your agenda. There has been an expedited, a petition to annex certain property on Sharon Valley Road from Newark Township into the city of Newark. It's known as an expedited to annexation. As a result, we have very limited timelines upon which we must act according to the Ohio Revise Code. Very first, well, the two resolutions that will come second, ninety-five and ninety-six, those are the standard resolutions we do at any annexation, which basically say what services may be offered or not offered once the property is annexed. The second is stating that if there is incompatible zoning, that a buffer zone will be mandated by the city. The first two ordinances, for those of you who have been around here long enough, they're not incongruous. For those of you who are new, when we do these annexations, I like to put forward two pieces of legislation, one consenting to the annexation and one objecting to the annexation. The reason being is that non-action on the petition to annex by the city is deemed to be approval. Therefore, if the city were, if the council were to simply address, for example, seventeen dash fifty-nine, the ordinance consenting to the annexation and reject that, that could be deemed as non-action because we took no action on it. Therefore, we put in both, seventeen fifty-nine and seventeen sixty, so that if council wants to truly object to the annexation, they have a meaningful opportunity to do so. You can't vote yes on both. You can only vote yes on one. But we're bringing them now as an emergency, and we're bringing them under Rule eleven. I have discussed that with both leaders of council, Mr. Marmy and Mrs. Floyd, who are in agreement with that, because we will not have another round of committees, and we will not have another opportunity at council to address these pieces of legislation before the statutorily imposed deadlines pass.
Well said. Autumn, why don't you read seventeen dash fifty-nine, and we'll go from there.
Ordinance seventeen dash fifty-nine by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd. Is that Mr. Frazier? Mr. Frazier?
I don't know.
An ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately thirty-three point five three acres, more or less located in North Township to the city of North Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Heard the first reading of seventeen dash fifty-nine, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion to adopt seventeen dash fifty-nine.
Second. Mr. Rath, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on seventeen dash fifty-nine?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
The way I understand it is if you're okay with the annexation, this is where you vote yes. I will be voting yes.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes, and just because I won't have a chance to say it again, if everybody, if this one passes and we vote yes, then really, the next ordinance, seventeen dash sixty, failure of a motion, we will not have to proceed with it. So, if we pass this one, we probably would not have to do the next one.
So, we'll read it, and hopefully, no one will make a motion if we pass this one. Correct. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash fifty-nine passes ten zero. Next, if you read seventeen dash sixty.
Ordinance seventeen dash sixty by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, an ordinance objecting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately thirty-three point five three acres, more or less located in North Township to the city of North Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Again, we've heard the first reading of seventeen dash sixty, it is an emergency. What is your wish? Seventeen dash sixty, we've got for lack of a motion. And again, seventeen dash fifty-nine has passed. Do I need to get that for you? Are you all right out there? Okay. Seventeen dash ninety-five, Mr. Sassen.
Mr. President, these are regarding the same annexation, and these are the two resolutions that are required by statute to be adopted by council in conjunction with the ordinance consenting to the annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Autumn, would you read seventeen dash ninety-five?
Resolution seventeen dash ninety-five by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Frazier, a resolution adopting a statement indicating what services, if any, the city of North Ohio will provide for approximately thirty-three point five three acres, more or less located in North Township, a territory proposed for expedited to annexation and declaring an emergency.
We've heard the first reading of seventeen dash ninety-five, which is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion to adopt seventeen dash ninety-five.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on seventeen dash ninety-five? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash ninety-five passes ten zero. Finally, or next, we have seventeen dash ninety-six.
Resolution seventeen dash ninety-six by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, a resolution regarding a buffer zone for the annexation of approximately thirty-three point five three acres, more or less located in North Township and declaring an emergency.
We've heard the first reading of seventeen dash ninety-six, and it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion to adopt seventeen dash ninety-six.
Motion by Mr. Rath to adopt seventeen dash ninety-six, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on seventeen dash ninety-six? Autumn, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash ninety-six passes ten zero. Thank you, Mr. Ackman, for showing up tonight, even though we didn't have to ask any questions. Thank you. Next, we have seventeen dash ninety-seven. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seventeen dash ninety-seven that we're asking the majority and minority leader to use Rule eleven on, to bring it up for the council floor for a vote.
Mr. President, I'd like to vote Rule eleven on seventeen dash ninety-seven.
Okay, thank you. Would you like any, to say, make any comments on this, or?
You're good first.
Go ahead and read. Well, yeah, we can do that. Autumn, please read seventeen dash ninety-seven.
Resolution seventeen dash ninety-seven by Mr. Rath and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service for the city of North Ohio to nullify the agreement of April first, two thousand and seven, with the Long and Burger Company, and to release the lien previously placed against the property located at and known as fifteen hundred East Main Street, North Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of seventeen dash ninety-seven. It is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash ninety-seven.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Does anyone have any discussion? Would we like to hear anything from Mr. Rhodes, or are we good?